Dan, Mark is not here. We cannot begin. So you might want to stop the recording until Mark is here. Welcome aboard, Mark. Mark, we can't hear you. We still can't hear you. Mark, we can't hear you. We're not hearing anything. Mark, are you there? You must be having connection problems. Mark, we see you're muted.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Sorry about that. Okay, okay. I've got the agenda in front of me here. So assuming that we've got enough people on board, I'll call the meeting to order. It's 7:18 PM. Roll call, Mark Parker, present.
Bill Rowinsky.
Marla Butts.
Stuart Peaslee.
Good. And Amy Monahan is on board for recording. Thank you, Amy. Okay, we got enough to conduct business, so. Action on minutes of the previous meeting, regular meeting, July 11th, 2022.
Excuse me, Mark, could you appoint Stuart as the alternate?
Yes, yes, Stuart. I would like to appoint Stuart Peaslee as alternate. He's online as SDP. For those of you that have a screenshot. Okay. Minutes of the regular meeting, July 11th.
I have. Bill Rowinsky, I have a comment on number seven, citizens comments. It would be helpful to have an address there. I believe that was Sun exit road. That property we're talking about.
Under citizens comments, okay.
Michael Kelly, hey, there is no address or location associated with that.
Need address, okay.
I don't remember what the address was.
Sun exit road, I believe.
Oh, yes, he was the one that's got the little pond that's on the east side of Sun exit road, gets drainage off of Bull Hill.
Yeah.
Bought the property, a couple of, and that was the person I was supposed to get the wood duck boxes to design to. Okay, got it.
So Sun exit road. Is that where it goes up into the field?
No.
Oh, okay.
It's. What's the name of that street that goes down towards Roseland Lake? Almost across the street from that.
Child.
Sorry, I live right near there and I don't know what the name is.
Is that where Child Hill goes into Roseland Park?
No, no.
No. No, no, no.
Oh, right. Yeah, just before Stonebridge Road. Yeah, okay, yep. Right, there, there, if you're traveling south on Sun exit road. And, and I think it might be like something like Woodland Drive or something like that. You kind of go down into a hollow and if you look to the left, it's, it's where their property was. And then as you come up over the rise, there's a new, like, there's a road that goes into the left with, I don't know, there might be four or five or six house lots that were built a few years ago up in there.
Yes, it is, it is right across from Woodland Drive.
Okay, right, right.
So are you suggesting to change the citizens comments to read Michael Kelly of Sun exit road? Bill?
Yes, it'd be nice if we had the number too, but I don't believe we have it.
I don't know.
With, with us right now.
I didn't see any other problem, any other, any changes required elsewhere.
Yeah.
Bill Rowinsky, I didn't see anything else other than requesting that addition.
Um, for now, I would just suggest as a placeholder, we say of his property, comma, on Sun exit road, across from Woodland Drive. Let's, let's do that from, for now. And then when we can, when we can get an address, we'll type that in there, Bill.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Order of his property, comma, on Sun exit road, across from Woodland Drive. You got that, Amy?
I think if we. Mark, I think if we accept the language that you just said, that should be sufficient for the minutes. I don't think you actually have to have a number because there's no other pond across from Woodland Drive.
Right, right.
So next.
Bill Rowinsky, I make a motion to accept the minutes from the July 11th regular Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Agency meeting, with the addition of the language by Mark Parker, with the location of the property of Michael Kelly, as Mark stated.
Stuart Peaslee, I second.
Second the motion. Stuart seconded, sorry.
Motion's been made by Bill Rowinsky, seconded by Stuart Peaslee to revise the minutes of the July 11th meeting to state that Michael Kelly's address in the citizens comments section, or that the location of the property is adjacent across from Woodland Drive on Sun exit road. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, so moved. Pending applications. Do we have any? Well, I, we do have this, there was one in my packet for. Let's see, has it been assigned a number?
No, that, that's.
I have one here in front of me. Name of applicant, Grant Fraser, 32 Beaver Dam.
Now. Now, that apparently was not included in the agenda. Grant Fraser was not a timber harvest. Apparently, when Ashley sent out the packet for August, she did not assign a number to this, and it's not on the agenda now. I don't know if it ever was assigned a number. It is a new house on Lake Bungee. And because it was stamped in by the town clerk as July 26th, its official receipt date would be 35 days subsequent to July 26th, and then we have a what is it, 120 days to render decision?
Okay.
So I would, I would suggest at this time that we'll just ask Dan to put it on, get it, give it a number and put it on next meeting agenda.
Right. That is actually an addition to existing house. It's just a garage addition. It's not a new home.
Two, two-car garage addition to existing house, correct?
So because it's within 125 feet of the lake, yes, it appears to be. I'm not, I don't know what Ashley did with this, so Dan is going to have to see if he can find out from Ashley what she did with it. She may have issued an approval.
It was approved because I sit on the lake commission, so I actually saw the approval from Ashley, so that actually went through her office and it's all set as far as, you know.
Okay. Dan, if you could just confirm that for the next meeting, that, that she did sign off on this application and what the application number was?
Yeah, so I'll meet with Ashley tomorrow.
Okay, good. All right. Okay, then I guess we can move on to new applications?
Just one other one.
Sure, what was the other one?
We have that from Michelle Granier. The withdrawal application. I don't know that we ever did anything with that or need to do anything with that. That was in the packet for the August meeting. It's a handwritten note.
There was a requirement in the July minutes that said that he had 90 days to either resubmit or withdraw, or withdraw and then resubmit in 90 days. He chose to withdraw, so that application has been withdrawn. And the agency's record should note that. I think Ashley included that in the packet, just as a notification that that application was withdrawn. That's the one near on Roseland Park Road, where the gentleman was digging and wanted to do the detention basin
Yeah.
to create, prevent flooding of the home, and he was building a berm, if you recall. That was a couple of months ago.
I'm just bringing.
And he has not done any further work.
Okay, so as a matter of formality, then, as I'm looking at the July minutes here, should we just simply state that application 06-22-18, we received a letter on July 17th to withdraw the application?
I, I think we, we need to put that under administrative business, amend the agenda to, to include that.
Okay.
Because right now we're on, well, we are on pending applications technically.
Technically.
And it doesn't list any, so.
Okay, we'll, we'll move that to administration, administrative business. Anything else under pending applications?
Yes, there was a timber harvest notification that is only electronically posted because we had such short notice to get this special meeting going. You would have had to have gone to the agency's minutes and agendas, and on there was the application posted. The timber harvest.
Okay.
So if you hadn't had a chance to look at it, it's on a corner of of New Sweden Road and Quarry Road. If you're familiar with that, it's on the southwest corner. Do you know where that is, Mark? That's in your neck of the woods.
Yeah, I know where Quarry Road meets New Sweden Road, so, yeah.
It's Brian Hagstrom.
Brian Hagstrom's property?
Yes.
And I also know there's a fellow named he bought land around Brian and, and next to my brother-in-law, Kevin Withers.
Jeremy Wentworth.
Jeremy, that's it. Right, Jeremy. So is this Jeremy Wentworth's property or is this somebody else's property?
Oh, it's Brian Hagstrom's property.
Oh, okay, okay.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
I'm Chris McCretsky.
And you are? Who you represent?
Chris is logging.
Isn't this under new application?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so we've, all right.
So have we officially moved to new applications now?
We said, because that's. New application.
Right, yeah, okay. So we're now on the agenda under new, new applications. Okay, Woodstock, town of Woodstock, I gotta find it.
Chris, while he's looking it up electronically, why don't you explain it to the rest of us, what you're doing, which you plan to do, and what's the regulated, what are the activities that would be in wetlands and watercourses or nearby them?
Okay, so I was doing a previous job for Jeremy Wentworth and we were actually landing his wood on Brian's property. And we're using the same access road that we use for Jeremy's and Brian's wood there. And so his, his property has one little intermittent stream down at the bottom, you know, heading towards New Sweden Road, if you will, and there's existing crossing, fall stone, and there's like a, you know, piece of pipe that's been there for years, and I only need to cross the brook probably three, four times maybe. And after that, everything will be, you know, on this side of the brook. And I won't need to cross that spot, but there's, you know, no water there right now anyway, because we're in a drought or so, that's all. And just going to harvest the bigger trees there and leave the tops for Brian. He wants some for firewood.
The Zoom documents, there's several maps there. Want to refer to them.
I see that you had Hunt map layers. Where does that come from?
That comes from an, an app that's called OnX Hunt, whatever, so it shows, you know, like GPS where you're at and it shows the lots and it shows the, you know, the landowner's name and all the boundary lines and stuff like that. And it, and it can do topograph maps too, you know. So that's pretty handy tool that we use out there in the woods.
Well, I looked at the, this application electronically, and I didn't see any reason why the commission would not approve this timber harvest. I also looked at it using MapGeo from Thompson, and I didn't see any problems there. I looked at the topo there. That's why I've never seen the Hunt, the Hunt map before, so that was interesting.
Yeah, it's pretty nice app. It works.
Bill Rowinsky, I don't have any problem with this as it's presented.
So there's already an existing pipe underneath for the intermittent brook?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's covered with, you know, all flat bones, and so it's pretty, pretty heavy-duty old crossing.
Okay. Yeah, and you're not going to be disturbing much right around that area, so I wouldn't worry about, you know, siltation or filling in right there, so that should be okay.
I have a question for Dan. Dan, do you know if this ever got assigned an application number?
I don't believe it did.
Okay. So I'm, I'm going to move to approve the request for timber harvest on Brian and Suzanne Hagstrom's map block lot 6391-70-02, or 396 New Sweden Road as a use permitted as of right under agriculture.
I think it's 376.
Did I say 376? I'm sorry, I should have said 376.
Second by Bill Rowinsky.
Motion's been made by Marla Butts, seconded by Bill Rowinsky to approve the timber harvest use permitted as of right request for the property owned by Brian and Suzanne Hagstrom off of 376 New Sweden Road. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, so moved. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we have application 08-22-02, Woodstock Inn Associates LP. Map block unit 6391-70-02, 94 Plain Hill Road, subdivision and construction of two single-family homes outside of Upland Review area. Okay.
Mark, I believe Scott Young is here to talk about the application.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Hello, Scott.
How's everybody?
Scott, would you be able to screen, would you be able to screen share? Do you have the PDF of your plans?
Sure. You able to see them? Oops, hang on. How about now?
I see, yes, yep. Okay.
So I have a question. You have quite a bit of abandoned leaching field locations. Do you know much about the history of that?
The inn used to be on these leaching fields since 1986 perhaps? And maybe, I don't know, COVID brain here, but maybe four or five years ago, they connected to the sewer line, so that this parcel is now in the district and they did connect to the sewer line because we could not reconstruct that to meet health code.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Is there a little, is there still a little house there?
Yes, there is.
Used to be the caretaker's house, yeah.
Yep, that house is still here. You know, here. So I'm not, you know, how much you're familiar with it, so you know, here's the inn at Wood, you know, the inn at Woodstock Hill, and yes, here's the house that Mark you just talked about. Parking lot is in this general area here. And the wetlands that are of concern, there's, there's a small patch of wetlands that come across the property line here, and then come on down, there's a pond over here. Along here, the wetlands are off the, the property. Where'd it go?
Who flagged the wetlands?
Sarah Berryman.
I'm not familiar with that name.
She's worked for us for several years. She came over to us from Fussin' O'Neill, and she's fairly recent soil scientist, but had done a lot of work with fuss.
Do you know if she's a member of the Soil Scientist Society of Southern New England?
As far as I know, she was, yeah, she's, you know, went through all the membership process while she was with us, and, yep. And Berryman, B, B as in boy, E R R Y M A N. And she lives down.
She produced a report? Did she produce a report for this?
I don't. I'm sure, because, you know, I'm pretty sure that we were, you know, so far away from everything, I guess we didn't ask her to do it at the time, Marla. If it's something that's required, I guess we could do that. We can go back and ask her to do that. You know, here, here you can see the pond and, and the small wooded area. This is essentially the property line here. This is a small area that is flagged on the property. The rest of this does follow the pond and the stream here.
Is that pond in the Parks and Forest, Connecticut Parks and Forest property?
Well, it's in the, the Richardson Trust.
Richardson Trust, and doesn't the Connecticut Parks and Forest have a right of way to it or something? I'm trying to remember.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have that history myself, Mark, I'm sorry.
Okay.
They, they may. I, I, I'm not sure. So, you know, so those, there, there's the wetland resources that we're looking at. The proposal is to put two new lots here and two new homes. Each of them about 1.4 acres. So they can see whether the two homes would end up being. Go to the next sheet, it kind of gives them more of the site development. Again, here's Plain Hill Road. Here's the existing home that you were talking about, Mark, the existing Cape House, the caretaker's house.
Right.
So one house would be up further toward the front, the second house would be a little further toward the back. They would each have private wells. Here's a well here, a well there, up front, reach home. And it's anticipated that because the parcel is on sewer that they'd be allowed to tie into the sewer because it is, you know, it is in the sewer district. Here's the, the wetland setback, shown here, the buffer.
What is the distance?
That's. No, I'm sorry, I, forgive me, I'm filling in for Pete Parent. And so just give me one second here. That would be, that'd be 100 foot.
Okay, so the Upland Review Area from a water course is 125 feet.
Is the pond considered?
Setback from wetlands is 100. That's a water course, so it's 125 feet. That's what it should be.
All right. Well, we can make that adjustment.
So that would mean that the well?
The well is.
In the.
Well, is that 100? It's right at 125 feet essentially. I, I'm pleased this is using a PDF to measure by, but.
Yeah, understand.
If we do need to move that well five feet, we can move that well, that's fine.
No, that's, that's, that's not a big issue. I just checked the registry for the the Society of Soil Scientists of Southern New England, their website, and there is no Berryman listed there. So if she is going to be the person identified as the soil scientist, she's going to have to provide her credentials. So we know that she's qualified as a soil scientist. Or if she can provide evidence that she is a member of the society.
Yeah, well.
Of.
She is, because she was working for me when we got her hooked up and, and paid for all that and got her all in, Marla, but that was two years ago, so I'm sorry, I didn't have that here in front of me. But.
Yeah, well, she's not on their current, she's not on their current registry, so I don't know if she still is a soil, listed as a soil scientist without her being on it. Anybody who's on that registry is clearly qualified, but if you're not on the registry, then we don't know what the qualifications are.
No, and please, I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to argue with you. I'm, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm sorry that I don't have more clear direction than that. I, I, she should be on there. We'll definitely address that and get you the information.
Okay, thank you.
And is that an existing, like an existing cart path or gravel road to the, to the southeast of that? Yeah.
This one here, yes.
Yeah, okay.
But that, yeah, and that is on the Richardson property.
Okay.
So my understanding is that this application, apparently Ashley signed off on it. And there was a question raised whether or not, because it was a subdivision, that the application had to come before the Wetlands Commission and not just signed off by the agent. And that's why we have it before us now, because there was legal counsel interpretation that there was a requirement for it to come before the commission because it's a subdivision. I, if I had, if I felt comfortable that the wetlands had been accurately delineated and that we knew that we didn't have any work in the Upland Review Area, then I would feel comfortable in having it signed off as a wetlands agent approval. But until we have that information, I, 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 I don't feel comfortable doing that. We should know that it was what, that the delineation of wetlands was accurate and that it includes any wetlands that could be affected by this lot. And typically, when a land is subdivided, they should be mapping all of the wetlands because these go, maps go on, on file on the land records. And having that wetlands delineation for the entire parcel is of benefit to any future development or any questions of activities in wetlands subsequent to the approval of the subdivision. So I noticed that the entire wetlands were not flagged. If you go to the drawing, let's see, I'm drawing two, sheet two, the wetlands delineation stops in the permanent conservation easement area. Is that a proposed permanent conservation easement area or is that existing?
I believe that's proposed as part of the subdivision process.
Okay. Then I definitely would want to have the wetlands delineated through that area.
So even though there's, there's no, even though there's no work happening in that area, you, you need to have that flag. Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm asking for because you're proposing to turn that over as a constant, permanent conservation easement area. And I think the, the resource should be clearly identified in the easement area.
Okay.
As to how much of it is in fact wetland and upland?
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
So would our recommendation be to the P N Z that the, the, the wetlands need to be finished flagging? And that they would include on the map an estimate of acreage of upland and wetland that is, that is in the designated conservation area?
No, I'm not suggesting that. I'm suggesting we put this on hold until we get that information and, and can give an accurate response to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Got it.
That's fine. The, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting that we're, we're attending would be later in October. So if we could be on your agenda in earlier October, I believe your agenda is earlier than the P N Z meeting. We can definitely bring this, this additional information and make sure we're all on the same page with that.
So here's the problem we have with the October meeting. I will not be there at the October meeting. Our membership is so low that we have to have every single member available, including the alternate, in order to make a quorum. So we would have to hold a special meeting in October. Cancel the regular meeting and hold a special meeting in order to accommodate this one. Or just hold a special meeting just for this application. Unless they get a new member, another member on board before then.
Right.
I just want to give you the heads up where we're going on this. We're at a little bit of a loss, so.
Yep.
But I would say you get the delineation of the wetlands in by, and if it's a soil scientist who's not on the registry that we're not familiar with, please provide their qualifications so that we know that they are qualified under the Connecticut law.
Stuart Peaslee-
And you can get started doing that.
Couldn't ask for first amendment to sit in ex officio?
He's, he has basically stated that he would never vote. He technically can sit in on meetings, but whether or not that constitutes a voting quorum, I don't know. We haven't had to face that.
He's done it with-
I know he's done it. I know he's done it. We're going to be talking later about changing the ordinance to reducing the size, so we could meet it, meet the requirement with just three. But right now, we have to have four. You could try to see if he could set in. That's a possibility. But can you have that information available by the first Monday of October?
Are you asking me that?
Can you have the wetlands delineated?
We will make sure we have it happen. And if not, then we, it's on us. We can, you know, I'll talk with Pete Parent, our project manager, and I'll reach out to Sarah tonight. I'm actually have a message almost done to her. And if we can't, we'll, we'll get back to your agent and Dan and let him know, don't schedule something special for us, but-
Okay. Also, could you add a note on the, on the plans of who the soil scientist is that did the delineation for future reference?
Yeah, I, I, I too am going to be out of town the Columbus Day week, so you know, the better week for me is the first week or the third week, so.
I could do the third, but can't do the first. So Mark, do you want to suggest that we have a special meeting in the third week of October?
Yes.
And instead of having it, so cancel the regular meeting and hold a special meeting?
Yes.
That would, that would be the third Monday of October?
Yes.
That would be October seventeenth.
And Scott, Scott, the P N Z meeting is later that week?
I believe so.
Yep.
I have the potential to be double booked on meetings that date with concert or Conservation and Thompson and Z B A and Woodstock.
And how about Tuesday, the eighteenth? Would the eighteenth be okay?
It would be okay for me.
Works for me.
Okay with me.
Because this is- How about you, Stu?
Yeah, it's fine for me.
Okay. Under Administrative Business, we'll, we'll change the date for the next meeting.
Okay. I didn't see anything else. There was a sequence of construction. Oh, I did have a question to you. You have a pump system. You're pumping, the, the, the inn is now connected to the waste, the sewers, the sanitary sewers.
Correct.
And so rather, and, and the line does not go down Pain Hill Road, correct?
That's right. It comes right across through here.
Yeah.
And on a, on a common-
You're screening that screen shared.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I guess I didn't hit that second button. So this, this is basically where the store is in this, this area here.
Okay, so we, we've sometimes lose electricity out here. What is the proposal? You know, because it looks like these two homes could have their own septic systems potentially. You have enough land there to be able to do that. Is there any backup system like proposed for these homes in case the power goes out? Because we've been out of power sometimes for four or five days.
They, they would definitely have to have either, either storage or backup generator. That's correct. It, it would meet the W P C A regulations for anybody who has a pump like that, yeah.
Okay, so, so I don't see anything on here on the storage capacity or, or any kind of backup system. Is, is that needed to be on the plans?
It's typically not for, for this level of plans, but if you'd like to get the information, we can get you that information.
This is Stuart Peaslee. One, one question. Would this, would this issue have to be reviewed by W P C A in conjunction or coordinated with this application?
Yes, sir. It is, it is being, we will talk to, we have talked to them to begin with and we're, we're going through the steps here. That's correct. So yes, it will meet their requirements.
My last question is, Line Master has had water pollution problems, groundwater pollution problems. Line Master is located to the east of this property.
Yep.
You're proposing two wells here. What indication do you have that there's no contamination reaching this area from the contamination that originated from Line Master?
I honestly don't know, Marla. It's, you know, the inn is a public water supply well, I'm sure because of the, the population that it serves. So I'm sure that's tested frequently. So that would be the indication that we have at this point.
I know that for many years they had a pump and treat system there, Marla. I don't know if it's still ongoing or if the D E P has done any kind of slate visitor valuation. If it's, you know, I could, maybe I could check with the remediation division to see if, if they know if the pump and treat system has been completed or because they had, I think it was Perk or, or Tetrachloroethylene or whatever it was that they had. Yeah.
Well, technically, those aren't our issues, but they should have been planning and zoning issues potentially to review those things. And if they're asking us for our input, technically, that would be just for wetlands and water course input, not what kind of water supply, what kind of septic. If the septic was failing, if the system failed there, that, and if it could affect, you know, wetlands or water courses, then we would have a vote, a write-in. I'm just bringing up these issues because I think it's something that they should look into before they commit to, you know, drilling the wells and building them up. And because the, one of the first things that I would do in lots like these is drill the wells and get them tested to make sure you've got plenty of good water. Because you're basically, the wells will be like little straws sucking off the water table and sending it up to the sanitary sewers. So there's no recharge going on, you know, like you would have with an onsite septic system. So you want to make sure that you have adequate water supply. But that is not our, technically, the Wetlands Commission's concern. I mean, it shouldn't be our concern. It's just, but it should have been planning and zonings.
Right.
Bill Rowinsky, does anybody know if they ran water along with the sewer when they installed it?
They, they did not. No, it was just the sewer. There is not public, you know. Again, the inn, because of its classification, I'm sorry, again, I don't know the exact classification, but I'm sure it's a public water supply in, in the state of Connecticut. It's for transient, certain number of people that you have, certain number of days a year. So I'm sure that that water gets tested. Just, just like a public drinking water, like a school or something like that.
I, I think it would be considered a community well.
Community well. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm really just shooting a little bit from the hip, but I do know that because there are classifications by the Department of Public Health, that they would, they would be tested. Now, this is being tested already, I guess, is what I mean.
And where are their wells? Do you know?
Off the top of my head, no, I don't.
Because they had their leaching fields in the back, so I was-
Existing public water supply well right there.
Where's that?
If you're able to see it here, am I still sharing?
Yep, 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 see it. Yep. Got it. So if push came to shove and there was a problem with the, the wells for these homes, they could potentially connect to that existing public water supply. It's not technically public. It's a community well, I think. And they could, yeah, they might be able to connect to that and, and be rescued for water if, if the wells didn't work, if, or if there was contamination. All right, well, you've answered my questions on that. I'm not asking you to respond to the Wetlands Commission on those, but the, those were questions I, I had chewing around in my mind.
Okay. So we'll, we'll definitely find out about the soil scientists. We'll, we'll get the remaining area on the property up through this area flagged.
And adjust the Upland Review Area.
Review area to one twenty-five, yep. From the water course, right?
Yep, yep.
So we'll, we'll depict either the one hundred foot from the wetland or the one twenty-five from the water course, whichever is larger.
And if you have to move the well location, just, you know, do that.
Well, you would just need a wetlands agent approval for the well. That's not a big deal. I mean, just putting a well in is not a big deal by itself.
Yeah, we're-
I move that we, that we table application oh-eight dash two-two dash oh-two Woodstock Inn Associates LP map block lot unit sixty-three ninety-one dash seventy dash oh-two ninety-four Pain Hill Road subdivision and the construction of two single-family homes outside of the Upland Review Area with the understanding that further detail would be coming in on the wetlands delineation.
Motion's been made by Marla Butts, seconded by Bill Rowinsky to table the application.
Oh, Bill got it there first, okay.
Yeah, Bill got it in first. And tabling motions don't need to be discussed, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, so moved.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Scott.
Say well, everyone.
Yeah, you too.
Bye-bye.
Okay, let's see. All right, administrative business.
Hello, everybody. I think I've been sitting here long enough, finally waiting to get to my agenda item. I'm Dan Malo. I am in the office on Tuesdays and Thursdays as the Wetlands Agent and Zoning Enforcement Officer. I also work with Marla and Thompson on Mondays and Wednesdays as the Conservation Agent. I come to those positions after six and a half years in Windsor Locks as a code enforcement officer where I administered the zoning board of appeals and Wetlands Agency. And I've been at Thompson for about a year now and three days in the office in Woodstock.
Dan, have you had the opportunity to take the, the D E P Wetlands Training Course?
Yes, I took it in two thousand and ten as a commissioner in the town of Canterbury. And I took it, I believe in two thousand and sixteen as the Wetlands Agent at Windsor Locks. And in the Zoom documents, I believe I included my certificate.
Yes, it is there. So I move that, sorry, I'm sorry, Dan, didn't mean to cut you off.
No.
I was going to move to appoint Dan Malo as the duly authorized Wetlands Agent for the Woodstock Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Agency and to deauthorize Ashley Stevens.
Second by Bill Rowinsky.
Motion's been made by Marla Butts, seconded by Bill Rowinsky to authorize Dan Malo as our, as our new duly authorized Wetlands Agent and to deauthorize Ashley Stevens. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Welcome aboard, Dan.
Thank you. It's good to meet you all.
All right. Oh, we did take care of item B, deauthorized Ashley Stevens, okay. Okay, review revise the inland wetlands agency forms.
Mark, can we table this to another meeting?
Yes.
Give Dan a chance to get oriented because he will be giving us some advice. I know we, Ashley had drafted some, but I've kind of lost track of where she actually finished, where she, what she had completed. And I think it would be good to give Dan a chance to take a look at that, find out what she last did, since he's going to meet with her tomorrow. And work, go from there on that.
Absolutely. Let's, let's table that. And, and Dan, when you're meeting with Ashley, please ask- Let's, uh, let's table that and, and Dan, when you're meeting with Ashley, uh, please ask her about, um, the revisions, the forms that she's been working on and where she's at and where they are, so. So that, uh, we can talk about it at the next meeting.
Okay.
All right. Review ordinance concerning inland Wetlands Agency membership. Are we ready to move forward on that?
In our July, um, in our August packet, Ashley had sent copies of what I had drafted, and she put an MB in a yellow sticker. And then what Rich Roberts modifications were. And I would suggest, um, do you all have a copy of Rich Roberts' suggestions from the July packet and the August packet?
Yes.
I do. I, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay.
Give me a minute, I can get it.
Sure.
Okay.
While Stu's getting that, um, this is called the red line version. So what's, um, in red is being proposed. What is struck out is being recommended to be deleted. And Rich Roberts' modifications to my red line version are in blue. So, and, and his strike, and then he has strikeouts in blue if there's a strikeout from my redlining. That's not complicated too much. One of the problems that I realized that I did, when I drafted this, is I, I didn't consistently use the term, the agency. So in, um, and neither did Rich Roberts notice this. So at the bottom, Stu, you got your copy yet?
Yep, I'm, I'm looking at it.
Okay, at the copy, at the bottom of page one, therefore, there is hereby created an inland Wetlands Agency for the town of Woodstock to be known as the Woodstock Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Agency. And I'm suggesting that in parentheses, we, we put in the agency. And then only refer to the inland Wetlands and Water Courses Agency thereon in, as the agency. Um, he refers to it as the inland Wetlands Agency. And I, I think in other places, it's only listed as the agency. So I'm suggesting that we just add in parentheses, the agency um, at that location. The next change that I suggested was changing the public act of the inland Wetlands Act, um, to the actual statute citation. And Rich Roberts said that that was okay.
Where is that?
On page, that's, uh, at the, um, bottom of page one. That, therefore.
Yeah.
There is hereby created an inland Wetlands Agency for the town of Woodstock to be known as the inland Wetlands and Water Courses Agency. And I'm suggesting adding in parentheses, the agency, pursuant to sections twenty-two A thirty-six through twenty-two A forty-five of the Connecticut general statutes. That would be added and struck out would be, uh, Public Act one fifty-five of nineteen seventy-two as amended by Public Act five seventy-one of nineteen seventy-three. There's been a lot of amendments subsequent to that, so it's better just to just cite in the statute.
Better, yep. I'm good with that.
And then the next thing, um, I'm suggesting that the, um, crossing out the headers uh, and placing all the headers at the, you know, all the amendments, placing that at the front of the document, not having them internal to it. Um, so I'm suggesting removing that, and then the next section, Rich Roberts has changed the word, the commission to the agency, which is good. Um, and then I reduce the membership from seven to five with two rather than three alternates. And then added the language, each member shall be appointed to serve a term of five years, such as that only one member of, one member's term expires each year. The language that is suggested to be struck out was when the agency was initially established. So they didn't want everybody's term to expire at the same time, so they staggered the appointments. Well, you don't need to do that now, because you've already got an agency established, and you just make sure there's only one person that needs to be renewed each year. And then I, if other alternate members, I changed the word will to shall. And he, Rich Roberts, as I said, shall serve a term of five years, and he changed it to two. And this is something I think the commission has to decide whether it wants to have the alternate members appointed every two years, so that one gets appointed each year. So there's always an appointment going on, either of a regular member and an alternate. That's the way Rich Roberts has suggested it. I was just suggesting appoint people for a, a five-year term and not bother the, the, the Board of Selectmen that frequently to make reappointments. But I don't know how you guys feel about that.
Uh, I have a question. Uh, Stuart Peaslee here, what is the difference between an alternate and a regular member?
Um, if we have a quorum, we don't need, the, the alternates don't necessarily sit in, but they can be appointed to sit in to make a full five. Um, but you'd have to be appointed. You're not automatically on the board. The chair has to appoint you.
So the alternate really is the functionality for, is the quorum?
Uh, filling, making a full component of the commission, so that there's at least a quorum and hopefully five.
A voting quorum, right.
Bill Rowinsky, uh, from seeing the planning and zoning meetings, uh, someone recuses themselves, then they usually appoint an alternate in rotating fashion to replace that person. I don't recall whether it's to make the quorum or just to replace the, uh, regular member. Uh, we have to some point, uh, discuss that ourselves on what to do if someone needs to recuse themselves.
Well, as, in, in my case, I was, obviously, uh, I changed my status to alternate because I was anticipating a lot of work out of state and not being able to attend meetings. Um, that didn't happen. So, I don't know if there's any advantage to having me back on as a full-time member in this situation or not, but I just thought I'd bring that up.
Yeah, I'd say it would be an advantage to have you back on full-time and we find another person to be willing to serve as alternate. Um, yeah, yeah. Because then
As an alternate, it's a good
Yeah, go ahead.
It's a good training ground for an al, you know, somebody who doesn't feel comfortable
Right.
all the time, if they're an alternate, they can sit in and get all the documents and stuff, and then can be appointed to sit, you know, to act on an occasional basis. Right now, any alternate that we get, because we only have three regular members, is always gonna get appointed.
Oh, I, yeah.
You know that.
So, I just didn't know what, I mean, I, my situation was that I didn't want to be, uh, looking for a clone for myself, because I couldn't make the meeting, so it just, it seemed like the right thing to do.
Yeah.
But, um, I, I don't anticipate any out-of-state work. So.
So the question that we have hanging on the table is, do we want to recommend the Board of Selectmen that the alternates get appointed for a five-year term? Or get appointed for a two-year term?
That's a good
I would tend to vote for a five-year, only because then the Board of Selectmen aren't every year having to appoint two people. See what I'm saying? If you have a five-year commission with each commission member serving for five years, and you have two alternates each serving for two years, that means the Board of Selectmen have to reappoint two people every year. And if you do the alternates every five years, you're only doing, you know, an, an appointment once a year, you know, once every three years, twice, twice in five years, you would have to do two.
My only thought about that, Marla, is that if somebody is on the fence about making that kind of commitment, it might make them a little bit more leery.
Yep. So, yeah, I'd go with two then, based on that, I'd be willing.
Bill Rowinsky, the other thing is that, uh, from my recollection, the initial appointment as a, as a member is only for one year. And then the selectmen reappoint you for the five years after the first year. So that could lead to more, more frequent appointments, if you keep the two years.
Well, Bill, you might have been appointed for one year because you were filling a particular slot from the original ordinance that said, you know, the first one gets appointed for one year, the next one gets appointed for two, the next one gets appointed for three, the next one for four, five. So depending what slot you were filling would have determined how long your initial appointment would have been.
All right, but that's
We don't need to do that anymore.
Okay, that's just the way it worked out for me, so I'm just bringing it up.
Yeah.
I would be inclined to go longer than two years. Um, a lot of cases like this, I split the difference, and I would go for either three or four.
I really don't care one way or another. I'll go with whatever way the, the group wants to go. Stu's got a point for two. Um, I got a point for five, um, three works. Gets a little more complicated, but it's fine. What do you think, Mark?
Well, yeah, we're gonna make a recommendation for two alternates to be on the commission, and if we can get those two alternates filled, then we could have the first one. Yeah, um. Hmm.
I would, I, I, Bill Rowinsky, I'd say the three or five.
Yeah, yeah, I like, I think three would probably work in my mind.
So we'll change that to three?
Yep, so serve a term of three years.
Okay.
The alternates, yep.
Yep, all right. And so then, um, their terms would, it's, would, would be such that one alternate's member's term expired, and only one alternate's member's term expires in any one given year.
Right.
In any given year.
Yes.
Okay, and then the next changes, um, uh, go down to section four, like, since the DEP's name change, we added that in. Also, again, change the, the public act that established the law is changed to cite the statute. And the same thing at the bottom of the page.
The, the commission, yeah, it should say that, uh, the agency shall adopt regulations in conformity with the regulations promulgated, promulgated, that, promulgated by the commissioner of the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. The DEP.
You want department in there?
Yes.
Department? Okay. All right. So add the words, the Department of
Correct.
Between of and energy, okay, got it. All right. Next page. Uh, paragraph five B, excuse me, section five in the heading, cross the words inland wetlands before the word agency. If we're using the nomenclature, the agency from the first page.
Yep.
I would delete the word wetlands agents, inland wetlands.
Right.
And then five B, the last line, same thing. Delete inland wetlands.
Shall be subjected to the review of the agency, yep.
Of the agency, period.
Right.
But at the beginning of the line, however, where it says Woodstock Board of Commission should read Woodstock lowercase board or lowercase commission. You only use capitals when you're citing a specific board or specific commission. In this case, they're talking about any other board or commission, so it should be lowercase.
Correct, I agree. Lowercase B, lowercase C.
And it's an or, not an of.
Correct, or, yes.
The next change was section five D. Um, Rich Roberts changed the names. Soil Conservation Service by removing soil and turning it to Natural Resources Conservation Service, and that's a correct, that should be corrected.
The NRCS, yeah.
Yeah, should say the United States Natural Resource Conservation Service.
Should we put in parentheses NRCS right after that?
No.
No?
Not used anywhere else. That's the only place it's used.
Got it, okay.
The next change is to remove the header there for the amendment. And then that's when they added the, the fines for violations. Because I believe I put that in the front. Uh, I don't think it's there. On the first page.
Amendment three.
Talks about Yes, there it is. Yep. There it is. All right. Then, uh, subsection A on section six.
I have, I have a question, uh, back, back in section six A. Do we want to leave it acting through its inland Wetlands Enforcement Officer, or do we want to say in, it's inland Wetlands Agent?
It should say agent.
Okay. Do you see where that is?
Yep, second line down, but also delete on the first line inland wetlands in front of the word agency.
Acting through its inland Wetlands Agent.
Mm-hmm. And then cross off. Is, I don't know, this, this language, I'm, you know, I don't, I really not a proponent of the inland Wetlands Commission issuing fines for violations. It's a very consuming, time-consuming process, and it doesn't necessarily yield you a whole lot. Um, but it got put in, in Woodstock, so it's here now. And I don't know of the agent having a designate. It's I think it should, you know, it should be just the inland Wetlands Agent.
Yes. I agree.
Because, say if something happens and we don't have an agent, the commission can appoint any one of its own members as agent, as long as they've, they've passed the certification program.
Correct.
DEP's certification program, so any one of us could act as agent for the commission.
I agree, it's not, uh, the Wetlands Agent Designee, it's the Wetlands Commission's Designee.
Yeah.
The agencies.
So let's, yeah, so let's cross off or his designate.
Yep.
Um, I did not review this section of fines for any purpose other than consistency. So I'm not proposing really any changes, other than the top of the second, uh, just before section A. Top of the page. Uh, the word effect should have said affect.
Yeah.
Effect. And so that should be changed. And then crossed out, uh, in subsection eight, subsection A, second line, cross out the word inland wetlands.
From the agency, yes, yeah.
Yeah. And I think what we need to do is just do a global search and replace for inland Wetlands Enforcement Officer or his designation, designate with inland Wetlands Agent or Wetlands Agent.
Wetlands Agent.
Dan, your official title, is that Wetlands Agent?
Yes.
Yeah, so I don't think that we should, go ahead.
Yeah, tonight's minutes should reflect that we have appointed him as our duly authorized agent. Yeah.
But he's, he's still a wetlands agent.
Yeah, right.
So, uh, I would say take off the word inland. Cause we, we've struck it elsewhere inland wetlands, and so I'm thinking that it's might be best acting through its wetlands agent.
Yep.
Does, um, I don't have my, uh. My regulations up. Um, they should be on the website, correct? So we should take a look and see what it says in the regulations, what the, what the term is for that position. Does anybody have their regulations handy? I don't have mine handy here, I don't think.
I have mine up on the screen, I'm scrolling through.
Be under section eleven. No, it's not section eleven, I got the regs. Section twelve. The agency may designate to its duly authorized agent the authority to approve and license activities. Let's see. They don't say wetlands agent, just says duly authorized agent. Well, how do you want the ordinance to read?
Section, section fourteen says the agency may appoint an agent.
Yep.
Under, under section fourteen enforcement. The agency may appoint an agent.
Doesn't say wetlands agent, so how would? I would feel more comfortable just stating wetlands agent, only because it makes it clear what the function is.
I agree with Mala.
Yep, I agree.
So, should that be with an S, wetlands or wetland agent? Cause I'm gonna have to do a global search and replace for this.
With, with an S. Wetlands.
With an S, wetlands agent, okay. So I'll do a global search and replace everywhere to make sure that it says wetlands agent.
Yep.
So.
Okay.
Right after that previous strikeout, um. There's parentheses there, it says the officer. We should probably change that to.
The, the wetlands agent. So I'll do a global search. Where are you, where are you?
Eight A, eight A, what you.
Okay.
We adjust, the third line, we just.
Third line.
Got it.
Uh, enforcement officers designate you saying that to agent, and then in parentheses it says the officer.
So then say the agent. Because as, as I just mentioned, when you're reading the Woodstock Town regs. Section fourteen says the agency may appoint an agent.
Yep.
Agent Smith.
So can we add in front of that, um, in the, in what's in quotes, wetlands agent? And to replace officer? Since we're using the term wetlands agent elsewhere and not a enforcement officer.
Well, then, then we don't need two things in the same line. We probably don't, if we're just gonna say wetlands agent before that. Then we don't need to say the agent in parentheses after it.
Correct.
Correct, you're right, you're right.
Don't we, don't have any parentheses.
Yep, just always use wetlands agent, so I'll do a global search and replace wetlands agent for officer.
Right, and we'll strike any.
Enforcement officer.
We'll, 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 we'll strike, we'll, we'll, we'll strike any parentheses with officer in it.
Okay, alright. Alright, got it. Because then when you go down to, um, Rich Roberts suggested a change on subparagraph B. And he wrote, if a person who wishes to send, is sent notice pursuant to subsection. And that should have been eight, not two, apparently the original ordinance. When they adopted it, that was section two, but became section eight when it got incorporated in with the rest of the ordinance. So they didn't really, they didn't really establish a separate ordinance, they kind of combined the two together. Um, and then, of course, every place where it's officer will be wetlands agent.
So previously, sorry to interrupt, uh.
You're fine.
There weren't any, um, penalties, just.
What do you mean, we don't have county government?
Okay, so, so if there were a violation, there weren't a penalty, there wasn't a associated penalty?
Well, there is if you take them to court and the court awards a penalty, that's different. Um, when you, when you issue a citation for somebody violating the regulations. Um, the chances of you going and getting a court award are probably a lot slimmer, you're basically letting somebody buy out of their violation. And, um, to be honest with you. If you have to go to that length to get somebody to, you know, to correct their behavior, you probably wanna cost them a little more than a. A thousand dollars.
That's what I mean.
You know, you wanna take them to court, if you, if it's that serious of a thing. Um, that's my personal opinion, but. Cause I know how these things can be quite on- onerous, going to a hearing and having a, a. A hearing officer and coming up with a decision, a decision which then could be subject to appeal. I mean, it's, it's like a little mini court, and it just, to me, it's an awful lot of work for not a lot of money.
Right.
And you don't, may not change the behavior, cause the person says, hey, it only cost me a couple hundred bucks, I can go do this again, I'll do it. Well, anyways, that's philosophy that's not here, okay, so under the, the. The next change is under subparagraph C. Halfway down through the paragraph. Um, Rich Roberts knocked off the term or policeman, cause we have no policeman in.
Okay, back up a few lines, on line six, on line six, well, let me begin on line five. An original or certified copy of the initial notice of violation issued by the eight, the inland. I'm sorry, issued by the wetlands agent, so officer now becomes the wetlands agent. Shall be filed and retained by the town, okay? Now go further down to the sentence you were just at, the presence of the wetlands agent shall be required. Okay?
Yep.
So anywhere that it refers to the officer, which obviously refers back up to section A where we had officer in parentheses. And now that we're not gonna have that, so any further, uh, mention of officer should now be wetlands agent.
Yeah, I'll do a global search and replace for that.
Got it.
I'll find every place where it goes.
Yep.
And every place where it says inland wetlands agency, I'll change that just to wetlands agency.
Right.
Be one thing if we had title wetlands in Woodstock, but we don't. That's why it doesn't matter to say inland.
By the way, just to satisfy my, my ignorance, and I apologize. Who is, um, Robert, Richard?
Rich Roberts?
Who's Rich Roberts, is he our town attorney?
Yeah.
Who is he?
Yes, he works for Halloran, Halloran and Sage.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
He's the town attorney for, for Thompson and Woodstock, and I don't know how many others.
Okay.
I can interject here, Bill Verwinski, just for the, for general information. Uh, I attended a planning and zoning meeting, I believe it was in July for something else. And the selectman had raised an issue with them for using the attorney. Um. But their defense was, well, we're actually generating. Money for the town, so it comes out ahead, but I'm just giving you a heads up that the selectman. Can raise the issue of spending the money on the town attorney.
Yes, so, one of the, one of the things is, is if you use them too frequently. Um, it, and they're really expensive, by the way, Halloran and Sage.
Yeah, yeah.
So you really only wanna go to that, um, when you, when, when you really have something that you think could ultimately result in litigation. That you might not be successful on, it shouldn't be for little questionable. I think going through some of the training course information, you know, like what you had from the Connecticut, um. Uh, Connecticut, uh, law, bar association. They put out stuff, and there's what's legally required, and there's that Mike Ziska did, and then there's a couple of other. Uh, documents that you can, and you can do a search on the web too, so I, I, sometimes it's not appropriate to go to the. Town's attorney, when it comes to an ordinance, an ordinance language, the selectman's office made that decision, I didn't. I mean, I offered the text to them and gave, or to Amy and not Ashley. And Ashley was the one who got the legal opinion for that.
Okay, so, I just, just bringing it up, uh, I think there's some of that concern was that there was. Uh, might have been multiple groups or multiple viewpoints. Uh, asking the same question to the, the town attorney. And they wanted to make sure they weren't really duplicating the same question over and over. Um, but they, like I said, they did bring it up, the issue of using the town attorney.
Yeah, that's what it's all about.
Oh, yeah.
And I don't have any other changes, I mean, that's, so, um. Unless there's some other changes that other people want, what I could do is I could make these modifications. These red line modifications, including the ones we agreed with on Rich Roberts. And I could send it out to all of you. And ask you if that's okay, and just give me an okay back, and then I can forward it to Dan. Or Dan can do that, one or the other, but I'll, I'll do the drafting of the redlining, and then, um. Dan, if you, if, if everybody agrees, um. Dan could then pro- send the process through the selectman's office. And authorize him to forward that to the selectman's office once we get. The modifications cleared individually through each of us, that we say, okay. And I don't think we have to wait for another meeting to do that, I think we, I can draft this thing up in the next, well. Within the next five days or so, and ship it out to you guys, and then you could send it back to Dan with any comments that you might have. Does that sound acceptable?
Sounds good.
Good.
Then it wouldn't be a meeting, it would be going through Dan. Um, and then Dan, once you get everybody's comments back, then you could forward whatever the language is to the selectman.
Sounds good.
And, and tell them that this is the, this is the proposal from the commission. Alright, I'll do that then.
Okay. So, we have taken care of. Items A, B. We tabled C. We took care of D. Uh, now are we doing subdivision regulations concerning wetlands?
I'm not sure what that's all about, do you have any idea, Dan? You're, you're muted.
It might have been in a, um, a vestige of a previous agenda. Kind of.
So when you meet with Ashley tomorrow, can you ask her what that was all about?
Okay.
Cause we don't know.
Okay. Uh, let's take the opportunity at this point in time to set the next month's meeting.
Um, let's, before we do that.
Sure, go ahead.
Or do you wanna talk, do the meeting first, or the, the Michelle Grenier withdrawal?
Yeah.
Just, just acknowledge that.
Yep.
Should we, um, amend the agenda, I moved to amend the agenda to include. A with, withdrawal request by. Michael Grenier of three ninety-nine Roseland Park Road, Woodstock. For application. Oh, what's the application number? Application number. Oh, six dash two two dash one eight. I'll repeat the motion, I, I moved him in the agenda to include. The withdrawal of application oh six dash two two dash one eight of Michael Grenier. Of three ninety-nine Roseland Park Road.
Second by Bill Verwinski.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed, alright. Based on the agenda. So let's go ahead and. Address that.
I guess I'll, I'll speak, the, in our packets from August, there was a correspondence, a handwritten note. In the wetlands and watercourses commission to whom it may concern. Per your request, I am withdrawing my application for the time being till my engineering company. Has all the paperwork completed, we hope to be ready for the August meeting, but this could change. Thank you, Michael Grenier, three ninety-nine Roseland Park Road, Woodstock, Connecticut, oh six two eight one. And it's dated July seventeenth twenty-two. And since he has withdrawn the application, there is no further action required by the commission on the application. However, if you recall, he started constructing work without a permit. So I think by, let's say this would be, if this was August, September, October. So by the November meeting, we should see something from Mr. Grenier. So if we can have it on the agenda for the November meeting, if, if there's no application received prior to then. Under administrative business.
Agreed. So Dan, if we don't, if we don't receive anything from him, just, um, start preparing the November agenda. Um, and we'll put that on it.
Good.
But if he does get something in in the next few weeks, then we can always put it on the, uh. On the special meeting that we're gonna set up. Um, so why don't we do that now, um? Let's, uh, let's move that we have, uh, the special meeting, uh, Tuesday night, August eighteenth at seven o'clock, sound good?
Tuesday night, not August, he said.
Did I say August?
October.
Yeah.
October. October eighteen, yep. And we will need to let the, um. The town clerk know to post, or have the meeting posted.
Well, Dan will take care of that.
Dan will take care of that, yep.
Cause he'll have to cancel the regular one, and then post the agenda for the special meeting.
Right.
And hopefully we'll get back on track as to. Things being logged in and checked out, and. Cause I, I think this was a little bit confusing for Dan, certainly was confusing for me.
Yeah.
Between what I saw that Ashley did not have in the logbook. She was not consistent in putting in, uh. Requests for rulings for uses permitted as of right and non-regulated uses, we had asked that those. Find, those be created as files, and she was putting, I think, UPA on the ends of the, those. I'm not sure what her nomenclature was, but.
That was.
She, when they have.
That was a shorthand, um, that I've seen a lot of reference to.
Yeah, cause she would assign a number first, and, and then did, we could determine after that if. It was gonna be a wetlands agent approval or an individual permit or. Um, but she could pre-screen some of those for wetlands agent approvals. And, and right now, until you feel comfortable, Dan, presenting stuff to the commission, feel free to. You know, hold off on issuing a decision until you. Presenting stuff to the commission, feel free to, you know, hold off on issuing a decision until you feel comfortable. Doing them without us reviewing them in advance. Cause you can do that as agent if it's just in the upland review area. But you'd need to report it to us what your actions were, so we know. So Mark, one of the things that, as an agent in Thompson, what I do is I've always put on the agenda. If I have any applications that are wetlands agent approvals that are pending. That I haven't rendered decision on, I put them on the agenda for the commission, just to let them know what's going on, if it's not a final action. If the action is finalized before it gets to the commission, meaning the legal notice goes out and appeal period ends. The commission's never gonna really see it unless I report it. So then I would report that in my wetlands agent report. Ashley never really filed a wetlands agent report. She would just tell us some things. And that was okay, as long as she gave us all the information, but I don't think she was giving us all the information. Um, so I think we're gonna have to just kind of work this out with Dan as to how it would operate. Um, cause Ashley kind of left things a little. Unclear in some areas.
Perhaps under, under administrative business, so, uh, you know, on the, on, on our agenda template. Uh, maybe we could have, uh, under administrative business, we could have, you know, pending slash open agent. Um, sign offs or something like that.
Well, what we used to have, uh, was wetlands agent, we used to have wetlands agent report. When Tina Lutroy was the agent, she would actually have an item that was called wetlands agent report. So under administrative business, we can add that.
Right, yep.
I concur.
Alright. Citizens' comments. Do any of you have any comments as a citizen?
Uh, yeah.
Go ahead.
No, no, you go ahead, Stu.
Well, I'm just being wise guy, but I think we should add. Double O seven with agent.
What, not eighty, eighty-six or ninety-nine?
No, I really haven't heard that before.
Sorry about that, Stu.
And not, and make sure we don't keep it a secret.
We'll have to buy a dome of silence.
So, uh. Uh, just on some business, uh, around town, Dr. Looby did finish his pond cleaning. And the spoils were placed in a hole that was located, uh, almost across from Bull Hill Road. Um, I've had some communication with, um, John Navarro, the public works director, because in the last, um, heavy rain. I went down and dug a ditch to let the water drain off into the ditch line on the south side of, of Will Hill Road. And so I asked him to come and clean it off. And the guys came in and cleaned the stone off the, the, the pad, the asphalt pad, but never cleaned the, the area that I was. Trying to get water to go into the ditch line. Well, anyways. John Navarro is interested in developing up some kind of drainage system that would carry the drainage. Um, across the road, um, and discharge it. And have catch basins at the end of Bull Hill and. And I don't know how he's gonna do it, cause I don't, uh, I, I've said to him, it's gotta stop going down to Dr. Looby's pond, because now that he's. Got it cleaned, having all this sediment going down is not fair to Dr. Looby. And so hopefully with the monies that they're coming through with the infrastructure improvements at the federal level, maybe they can get something going that would. Relieve that problem. Cause, um, I don't want to keep, keep, keep a shovel in the back of my car so I can shovel it off the dirt so it can get into the ditch line.
Yeah, yeah.
They did an awesome, awesome job there.
Yeah, he did it perfect.
Yeah.
He had a de-watering, he had a couple of de-watering sump, pumping sumps. Uh, going and he isolated the water that was coming in from the stream to the pumping sump area, so it wasn't going into his major excavation area. When he finished with his major excavation area, and if you noticed, if you had driven by, he had these. Big wooden mats, they're big logs tied together. And, um. And, and they used them for Northeast Utilities or Eversource used them when they did the lines, the extra power lines, the. Grid lines that they put in a couple of years ago. And, uh, he then removed, once he got it completely cleaned out, except for where the de-watering device was. He then removed the berm and removed the de-watering device. But by that time, the pond was not discharging any water, and so there was no dirty water going down to Roseland Park. It was really, the guy did a perfect job.
Yeah.
Very impressed with it.
Excellent.
I told him that too.
Well, he leads by example, and he, many years ago, he was on the commission with us.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, George Dr. Looby. Another fellow named Frank Abisi, who lived across from Bill Rowinsky's. Um, yeah, there's, there's a lot of guys that have. Moved on to older age. But yeah, yeah, George Looby, the, the father was, uh, was on our inland wetlands commission with me.
Oh, wow, I didn't know that.
Yep.
Also, finally, uh, um, Mr. Pedro has finished his grading work and the grass is beginning to grow. I don't know what he finally finished off with that, and John Navarro told me that there was something that the town was gonna have to. Talk to Johnny Butts about. Um, I'm not sure what his thoughts were, whether or not he was gonna try to get more of the runoff. Draining off of Payne Road and into Johnny Butts's field before it gets down the hill. I don't know. But stay tuned on that.
I can back up once the, uh, to Dr. Looby's pond. Uh, the only thing I did notice about that is. Uh, there's nothing there to stabilize the banks for now. I don't know if it's been seeded, but there was not no mulch or anything but theirs. And I don't recall, I haven't been by there to see how much erosion might have happened with all the rain. But I was.
Yeah, I've been watching.
Bare dirt, so.
Yeah, they were there this weekend, um, doing the fine grading work. And they've got it, it looks like they've got it topsoil. Um, so I'm presuming that now that it's grass growing season, that, that they'll be seeding it in. The only concern that I have is that the embankment inside the pond. Is steeper than three to one, which is what's the recommended slope. Um, and I don't know how long that's gonna remain stable.
Yeah, very, very steep.
In ice action. So. That's the only issue that I saw that's potentially coming up. As far as the heavy rains, I haven't seen anything that was, you know, problematic. The turbidity in the pond appears to be coming from Bull Hill. It's not, I don't think it's coming from his embankments. They don't show significant amounts of erosion yet.
Well, the only thing, only option would be to put riprap down where it's too steep, right?
Yeah, or flatten it. Flatten the slope so that it's, it's, it shouldn't be steeper than three to one where it hits the water. Cause the ice action will cut it. When it freezes.
Yeah, and a bull hell roadside, I don't know that, that could be accomplished. Because it's, it's an uphill grade there also. So. Some point you'd either have.
And that crop. I don't think he changed anything along Bull Hill itself, not Bull Hill, I mean, along, um, Sinexic. Where the cross culvert is.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a stone head wall there.
Yeah.
It's hard to see. I'm surprised at how low that culvert is. I thought it was higher than that, but. It must have been partially clogged with sediment. That's what I'm thinking. The reason why it didn't, they couldn't see it so well.
Yep.
Yep. Alright.
Can I move to adjourn?
Yes.
I move to adjourn.
A second. Motion's been made by Marla Butt, seconded by Stuart Peaslee to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, so moved. At eight fifty-four PM.
Come on board, Dan.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Amy, for your service. Thank you, Dan, for, for joining us.
You're welcome. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.